Let's move on to 6.3, 9:05 a.m. Sitting as the Lake County Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District, consideration of presentation and discussion of the Clear Lake Hitch Conservation Strategy from the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. And we also have our Water Resources team coming up. There's four chairs. There's more than enough.
I believe there's five for you guys.
Thank you.
You guys want to sit here so you can carry it?
Good morning, Board, Admin, County Council, the public. Thank you for having us this morning. My name is Angela De Palma Dow. I'm a Program Coordinator in Water Resource Department and for the Watershed Protection District. And I wanted to introduce Jared Sellers, Environmental Scientist with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And I just wanted to provide a reminder that on the Water Resource Department webpage, there is a Clear Lake Hitch tab. And in that tab, this document for the conservation strategy is provided. It's the most newest draft. There is also information there for anybody that wants to submit a comment on this conservation strategy. I believe there's a 30-day comment period. Right. So the directions are there, provided to you, so you can submit a comment directly to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Sacramento Branch on this strategy. And then if anybody else has any information or wants any information about the Clear Lake Hitch, that's also provided on that website. And we have another introduction.
Good morning. No. Good morning. My name is Jordan Beaton. I am Water Resources Program Coordinator and also here with Angela and Jared Sellers. Go ahead.
My turn. Hey, everyone. How's it going? It's nice to be here today. My name's Jared Sellers. I'm a Fish and Wildlife biologist with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I work out of the Sacramento Fish and Wildlife Office. And I'm here to talk to you guys today about the conservation strategy, answer any questions you guys might have about that, and also to talk a little bit about what the Fish and Wildlife Service does and what we do in California to help conserve species, and hopefully answer any questions you guys have about that as well. So I'd like to start off by saying thank you all for having me here today. I really appreciate you guys giving me the time to come and talk about this. You know, collaboration and working together is at the heart of what we do in this conservation strategy. And the Fish and Wildlife Service recognizes that, you know, we have to be here and show up to make sure that these actions that are outlined in the strategy get done. So that's what we're here to do. You know, we're here to strengthen our partnerships. Oh, is that my, for advancing me? Sweet.
There we go.
Oh, cool. Thank you. So, and I'd also like to acknowledge the many efforts that the county's been making towards the conservation of the Clear Lake Hitch. You guys have been working for decades. You have many projects underway that are going to support the hitch. And the Fish and Wildlife Service here is to help give you guys a hand to get those projects across the finish line. You know, there have been many documents produced over the past century even that detail the issues that are affecting Clear Lake and the hitch. And a lot of those documents had management recommendations that were produced out of them. And many of those things were things that the county adopted to get done. But there hasn't, up to this point, been a document where all the relevant agencies can come together and pledge that collaboration that's going to be necessary to get that stuff done. So that's what this conservation strategy is. It's a place where all the partners involved can come together, say what they're doing, give reports on the progress they've been made, and where we can really focus our actions as a team, because it's going to be a team effort to get this underway. So what is the conservation strategy? Not done yet. We'll get to the next parts of this slide. I'll talk a little bit first. Again, it's a collaborative document. It's meant to be a comprehensive document. Like I said, there's been studies that have looked into the problems with the algae blooms in Clear Lake, and there's been studies that look into what's going on with the hitch in Clear Lake. But there hasn't really been a document yet that's put all this science together to show, like, these problems are interrelated and all connected, and the solutions to these issues all lie together. You know, it's to establish priorities, to address, you know, these issues and actions. And it's also supposed to be a living document. It's designed to be updated periodically with the latest science and data. This is a very complex system we're working in, and we always need to get more data in here to help us manage the situation. I believe that we need the conservation strategy, you know, because it is where we can share information, share resources, and make this a community effort to lift up Clear Lake and the hitch. It's somewhere where we can all, you know, provide, like I said, mutual support and to collaborate. For things like the Middle Creek Restoration Project, like the county has initiated, you know, these sorts of projects are very complex. They're very time-consuming. That's always going to be the case. But we're here to do the hard thing, to be here for the long run and to make sure that those things get across the finish line, because you're not going to have restoration of Clear Lake or the hitch without projects like this Middle Creek Restoration Project and other restoration projects that are going forward. And then after I show you guys the actions and the strategy, I'm going to talk a little bit about, again, what the Fish and Wildlife Service does, show you examples from other places in California where we worked with local municipalities, local county governments, private landowners to put conservation on the ground. And, you know, I'm here to get acres of wetland restored, to get miles of river habitat restored. That's how I measure our success in the Fish and Wildlife Office. And there's, I'll talk about some HCPs that we do, talk about, you know, we have a Safe Harbor Agreement in Sonoma that we do with the wine growers there. And we've already had interest from landowners here to do the same sort of stuff in Clear Lake. So that's what we're going to do. Anyway, that's my intro. Now we're going to go through the actions and the conservation strategy. So there's really two main important parts of the conservation strategy, as I see. Firstly, are those the actions that, you know, we as partners have all come together and decided that we want to work on. And the second most important part is the agreement part of it, where all the partners, you know, pledge to provide mutual support and aid to each other as we're able. So here are just a few of the contributors that we've had. This document's been in development for years, and everybody on this list has had a say in it. They've all had time to provide comments and really shape what the draft is today. So what it looks like today is a result of all these voices going into it. And I think that's a strength of the document. It's meant to be collaborative. It's meant to be, it's not going to be everything for everybody, but it's meant to be something where we all, you know, can agree that this is where, how we want to move forward. So the habitat factors that we are addressing in this conservation strategy and the actions are meant to address are these four things that are really key to the ecology of the hitch and the ecology in Clear Lake. So connectivity is something, you know, we've all talked about. I'm going to go through these quickly, because I think that we all have a pretty good understanding, but feel free to ask questions about this stuff later. So connectivity in the tributaries. We know that the tributaries are essential for spawning for the hitch. Water quantity in the tributaries. Wetland, thule habitat is very important. We know that, you know, we've had over 85% of wetland and thule habitat that was historically in Clear Lake has been lost. And that also directly contributes to lake water quality, that, you know, we've had several decades of studies from UC Davis and others looking into that. So I'm going to go through all, there are six goals in the conservation strategy, and under these six goals, there's objectives and actions that we've been prescribed to meet these goals. So I'm going to go through all of the objectives and goals, but I'm not going to hit all the actions. Those are all in the conservation strategy, and we hope to get your feedback on that. And that's a big part of why we're here. So Goal One is provide for increased reproduction and survival of the hitch. And Objective 1.1 is to establish a population target for the hitch. And, you know, this really is the base, like, this is a collaborative project, establishing a population target. We need input from local agencies, from tribal governments, from everybody to make sure that, you know, the relevant scientists and all that, because the species fluctuates a lot in population. So having numbers that we can, we can look at when we have different, you know, environmental conditions would be really helpful. So this, when I gave, this is part of a, many of these slides are from a presentation that I gave at the Hitch Summit this past November. And at that summit, I talked about where we were at, at that current draft. So, and this is where we were at. We had the actions. We had some of the priorities. We still needed to get the agencies listed that were going to do those actions, and we needed to give updates on those, the status updates. So we've done all that in this current draft. So this is where we were in November, and this is where we are now. So you see, the action has changed a little bit. It now reads, "Continue current surveying efforts by CDFW and partners using the proposed initial population goal. This population goal will be refined with population data gained from mark recapture efforts." We say that all the partners decided this was a high priority, and the agencies that are going to be working on this are, you know, CDFW, Big Valley EPA, Robinson EPA, Habimetal EPA, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the USGS. So this is really describing things that are ongoing right now, and you see that reflected in the status. Ongoing surveys for hitch continue to occur each year. And as each new year data comes in, our understanding of the situation grows. So, just so you have a flavor of what some of the actions are underneath the objectives. So again, we have Objective 1.1, population target. Actions underneath that, again, that the partners have come up with are continued targeting monitoring, continued spawning surveys. So Action 1.14 in the population target is verify permanent removal of barriers in streams. So all the partners decided that the stream barriers were such an important thing that they needed to be in Objective 1.1 with our population target, because if we want to increase the population, we have to address those barriers as well. Also under Goal One, Objective 1.2 now, on from 1.1, is increase survival of juvenile hitch. Juvenile hitch rely on the nearshore habitats and submerged aquatic vegetation and thule beds that are around Clear Lake to rear and successfully become adults. So in order to increase the survival of juvenile hitch, you have to increase the cover and extent of wetlands. That goes without saying, I think. So Action 1.12 is the Middle Creek Project. 122 is Thule Lake Restoration, and 123 is Manning Creek Restoration. All these projects are to increase the extent of wetland habitat in Clear Lake, which has many benefits for the fish, not just hitch. All the fish in the lake benefit from that. It also has water quality benefits to help deal with the harmful algae blooms and things like that. Obviously, that's not something that's an overnight fix. It takes years to do. But again, you know, just because something takes a long time and it's hard, I don't think that's a reason to kick the can down the road anymore. These need to get done now. So, moving on, Actions 124, again, under Objective 1.2, is to restore wetland habitat at the mouth of other tributaries. Those first three actions were, you know, where we decided that should be our focus. And then Actions 24 and 125, continue program for capture and release of fry and adult stranded in tributaries. This action is in here to memorialize the many efforts by the state and Robinson EPA in conducting hitch rescues as streams dry out, which we consider as a very important program to continue. All right. Objective 1.3 is identify and address migration barriers. So this is, again, getting at the importance of migration barriers in the watershed and really calling out the permanent removal of barriers specifically on Kelsey, Manning, Scotts, Clover, and Middle Creeks, as those are the most important tributaries for hitch. We start there, right? You can go out. So continuing on with that, after, you know, the specific streams, we want to do the watershed-wide assessment of barriers under different flow conditions. The map you're looking at right now is something that was put together by, you know, area biologists walking the streams and identifying barriers to hitch and hitch passage. And part of that work is, the last objective you see here, 1.4, under the Goal One, is develop passage design criteria for hitch. Hitch are unique fish. They don't have many of the same swimming characteristics of, say, salmon or other charismatic fish that are currently protected. So that was Goal One. Moving on to Goal Two. Four more to go, y'all. Objective 2.1 is tributary restoration guidelines, like you saw, continuation from Goal One. Objective 2.2 through 124 are all concerning the restoration of Kelsey, Scotts, and Middle Creeks. So this is, goes beyond just removal of barriers, right? Barriers are one thing, but natural waterways that are undisturbed is a different type of restoration, you know, to restore sinuosity and habitat complexity. That's what we're talking about here in this sort of restoration.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
What about Coal Creek? I don't see it added here.
Coal Creek, we can put that on there.
I know we have a lot of projects going there, too.
Good.
There was quite a lot of stranding there last year.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought that up, because, you know, again, part of this presentation is getting this feedback from y'all, because you guys know stuff that we don't know, and we want to make sure that that gets reflected in here. So it's a document that works for y'all.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, please keep the questions coming. So yes, restoration of these creeks, the partners called out specifically because they've been recognized as having the biggest impact and contribution to hitch numbers. But that's not to say that the other creeks are not equally and vitally important, but just for prioritization, that's why we have that here. So Objective 2.5, assess other streams throughout the watershed. All right. That was a duplicate side. Sorry. Goal Three, on from Goal Two, provide suitable habitat conditions in Clear Lake itself. So Objective 1.3 under this goal is increase extent and protect existing wetlands. Again, that's kind of just also retreading that ground of protecting, of, you know, wanting to support Middle Creek Restoration Project and other wetland restoration projects. And Objective 3.2 is acquire, protect, and restore historical wetlands. And as you guys know, land acquisition is always a problem when you're doing conservation, and really, the only thing you can do is just take the time to keep at it. All right. Goal Four, continue and expand research and monitoring. So we've done a couple of updates in this goal from work that UC Davis has been doing here in Lake County to set up education programs for children. They've been doing general ecology education, and we've talked to them about, you know, that's also important for the hitch as well, the general ecology of Clear Lake. So it does not reflect in the slideshow, but in the document, we've made some updates there. So Objective 4.1 under this goal is establishment of a Clear Lake Science Technical Advisory Committee. This technical advisory committee is supposed to be modeled off, so what they're doing with the Delta Smelt right now is to have an outside group of scientists come in and evaluate the science that's currently going on in Clear Lake, the monitoring programs, the restoration efforts, and to make recommendations on how we can improve. I think it's important for any sort of program like this to have some sort of outside input and help from experts who aren't necessarily here and can see things that we don't. So this is a new objective that we put in here, and yeah, I think that's a good way to go. Goal Four is, Objective 4.2 is continue to monitor the effects of water quality. You know, this is something that a lot of partners are doing right now, like Big Valley EPA is doing water quality monitoring. Those sorts of efforts are things that, you know, we want to be able to support and continue on, keep going. Continuing on in Goal Four, Objective 4.3 is looking into the effects of predation and competition from non-native fish. We know that Clear Lake has been subject to many introductions of non-native fish over the year, and that's had an effect on the food web and food structure of Clear Lake. So getting to understand that is a vital part of managing the system. Goal Four, Objective 4.4 is monitoring and researching the effects of water extraction. And action under this 441 is develop model or integrate modeling completed for SGMA to determine effects of water extraction during the spawning period. And then Objective 4.5 under this goal is other research. There's a lot of basic research that still needs to be done into the ecology of the hitch and its life cycle, and that's something that we hope is in this catch-all Objective 4.5 category. All right. Goal Five. Goal Five is increase outreach and education programs. I'm confused. Objective 5.1 is expand educational efforts to increase public awareness. You know, getting public engagement on all these actions is vital to making sure that they get done. Making sure that the public understands how important these actions are to protect Clear Lake for future generations is vitally important, and we think that's part of our job as well, is to help educate people. And Objective 5.2 is increase public engagement. Partners here on the ground already do a lot of research, like Shagom Days, that's coming up in June, that we're going to be a part of, and other events like the Thule Boat Festival. All these things that increase the environmental awareness in Clear Lake are things that we want to support, and partners have decided that we want to support as well. All right. The last goal, Goal Six. So this was added in as a request from the state water boards. They wanted to make sure that we had a goal in here that memorialized continued cooperation, coordination between all relevant agencies. And I'd like to add in private partners into this as well, because, you know, we're not going to get any of this done without help from private landowners here in Clear Lake. So that's the six goals in the conservation strategy. Again, that's when you're looking at the conservation strategy and you're thinking, does this serve my community? Please, I invite you to look at the goals and the actions in those goals, because that's really the important part. Again, to go back to the beginning, this document is about collaboration, right? So all these actions and goals, this is all subject to change as things are accomplished, things get updated, as partners indicate priorities that they might have that they want to see in this. That's what this conservation strategy is for. So the important part is the agreement and the collaboration that comes from it. And all this stuff that gets put in it, you know, that is, always remains to be determined. So moving on to the next part, the next important part of the conservation strategy is the agreement itself. So this slide has a lot of words on it. I won't read it all to you, but it is all very important. And I'll give you the long and short of it. It really is just saying that all the partners are coming together, that the purpose of the strategy is to serve as a framework for the conservation and protection of Clear Lake Hitch and Clear Lake. Again, this identifies conservation actions, describes current conditions and threats, and provides a timeline to accomplish these conservation actions. And so if you guys are, we invite you to be signatories on this, and this is really the agreement that you're signing. And so this continues on to say, "Signatories indicate its agreement of the value of conserving Clear Lake Hitch and Clear Lake. Signatures indicate the entity's intent to support the implementation of priority actions identified in the strategy as feasible within individual budget and policy constraints. The signatories value the meaningful precipitation and technical and scientific expertise of partner staff as available to implement strategy actions and identify potential funding sources. However, it is understood that signature of the strategy is not a committing, commitment to providing staff resources. In certain cases, conservation actions are constrained by current ecological, logistical, or socio-political conditions, and restoration options can be limited. Final actions, commitments, and resource allocations will be determined by individual partners." So that's the really important part of the conservation strategy, agreement. So that's really mainly what I wanted to talk to you all about today, were the actions and the agreement. Right now, the current status is we're securing final consensus among all signatories. We want to make sure this is a document that works for everybody and that all the partners are involved in and part of. It kind of defeats the purpose of the document if not everybody wants to be a part of it and sign it. So we're going to make sure that, then that's what this 30-days comment period is about right now, is giving people that time to provide feedback. We wanted to make sure the public had time to provide feedback, because having buy-in from the public is very important to getting these actions done. If the people of Clear Lake don't believe in these actions, then they're not going to happen. That's just how that goes on. Couple of good reminders. Many of the actions in this strategy are already underway, and they're going to be, continue to be underway regardless of the status of the conservation strategy itself. Right now, it's still in development and draft phase, but many of the actions in the strategy are not in development or in draft phase. They're actually ongoing right now. And so don't think that this document is any way holding up conservation from happening in Clear Lake, because Sacramento Fish and Wildlife Office, I can speak for, is committed to conserving Clear Lake and the hitch regardless of the conservation strategy or any other type of legal things. We're here to help the hitch in Clear Lake. And again, reminder, this is going to be a living document. It's something that's always going to be changing. What we hope is not changing is our commitment to working together and collaborating to get these done. So just wanted to leave you all with a couple of things that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has been doing recently in Clear Lake. I'll take off, I was speaking for the team before, the strategy team. Now I'll just put on my service hat and speak for us a little bit. Again, we're committed to helping the Clear Lake Hitch recover regardless of its federal listing status. Since 2005, we've provided more than $3.7 million in grants and underfunding to hitch recovery. In just the last year, we've given $250,000 to USGS to help with their hitch efforts and studies. And we've just gotten a grant for $2.5 million through the bipartisan infrastructure law to do a restoration project on Scotts Creek.
So is that, the first one and the last one have been since the emergency proclamation?
Yes, that's correct. All right. That's the end of my prepared comments, so I'm free to take questions and anything else.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Ms. De Palma Dow or Ms. Beaton, do you have anything to add before we bring it to the board?
The only thing I would add, thank you for the opportunity, is to address Supervisor Pyska's comment. I looked through the strategy about Coal Creek. So we list the actions specifically for the largest tributaries, being Middle, Scotts, and Kelsey Creek. We do have an action item that includes restoration on all other tributaries, but we can look into that and add something specific that lists some of those creeks. I think when, I've been working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the partners on this since I got here in 2018, and I believe it started in earnest in 2017. And so it's kind of one of those And so it's kind of one of those things where you want to make sure you include everything, but not include every single minute thing. So we will make sure and have a list of where there's current restoration efforts going on, and list those additional tributaries that are needed. If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you for that, because we are looking at some other funding opportunities for more work there, and if it's not in the strategy, it might be difficult to get, to secure it.
Yeah, and it's also the case of we have some things that are like starting right now, so it's like, do we include them in this version of the strategy? But we also know that as soon as we, this one gets approved, the next version's coming up in five years, and so we better start working on that one, too. So it's one of those balance things, yeah.
And what's the timeline for us to approve this?
Jared, I think you could give more detail to that, but I think the process is, right now is getting the feedback, the 30-day comment period from all of the partners, the public, and then hopefully getting all that incorporated, and within a few months, getting it out for final, yeah, this is definitely something we want to get done this year, sooner rather than later. Yeah.
Yeah, just to echo a little bit of what Angela was saying, we have, right now, we have this, a comment period for everybody. After that, we're going to take some time to incorporate those comments, and hopefully it won't be too long, obviously depending on the nature of the comments. And then we're going to present the board with a final draft, and that is when you guys can just decide if you want to sign it or not. So a couple of months, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to pause real quick. Are we down on Zoom? I see it on your screen in front, just not the one up there. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Thank you for the presentation. Exciting to see this move forward. I know it has been in the works for several years now. I guess my first question is process-related, because although I do have several bullet points I could comment on now, I'm wondering if there's interest from the board to take advantage of that 30-day comment period and either get a mini ad hoc appointed, or just figure out a way to provide, allow water resources to the extent possible, given their staffing, to provide drill-down ability to comment, or if we just want to take general comments now and call it good as far as our board input. So I think my druthers are, this is a lot to digest, and there's some technical information in here. If we were to, for example, bring back an item on June 18th, where we would consider our county response, or the response of the watershed district, or both, in a kind of a comprehensive manner, that might be one way to go, or we can just shotgun our concerns right now.
Well, just to respond to your comment, I think we have both opportunities, because we're not taking action today to sign and be a signatory to this. We're going to wait for those 30 days to be over, collect all the information, maybe some of those comments will give further discussion to greater ideas and greater comments. And I think at that point in time, we should have had the chance to also review and come up with our comments to bring back and add to that document as well. So I think June 18th would be a great time to not add another meeting, or ask for extra resources from Water Resources to be utilized, and just use our normal, regular meeting schedule that we already have and bring it back on that date. That would be my preference.
And then we would filter our comments to Water Resources, somebody else in the meantime, or again, we don't want to burden them.
I think we can bring them back individually ourselves when it comes, or offer them to Water Resources just to check in and see, but if it comes back, we have the ability to make comments like we are today.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification. If it's okay then...
I'm just speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the board. I don't know if there's a yes or no, but that would be my preference.
What's the process to submit comment?
So because this isn't a formally Fish and Wildlife Service document, we're really relying on our partners to help us solicit and gather comments. So there are several different ways to submit comments. You can submit them to, hopefully, you know, your constituents would like to run their comments through, you know, whoever they feel best represents them. So you can send them to the Lake County, sorry I'm volunteering you guys. You can also send them directly to the, oh, my slide's gone. You can send them to the Sacramento Fish and Wildlife Office. We have an email address that is listed on the website now, is also on those slides.
When you access the strategy draft, it tells you how to comment?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes, it's all on the same webpage, and we didn't want to make it too, like click, click, clickety-click, so if you just go to Water Resources and go to the tab for Clear Lake Hitch, yeah, the conservation strategy has a little red thing that says new, new draft, and then right below that is the directions for somebody to comment. Because Water Resources and the Watershed Protection District have been part of the process of writing the strategy, you know, we will take any comments, because again, we've written this over five, six years, there's been a lot of staff turnover, projects have changed, they've moved around, even some projects have switched partners and agencies. We just want to make sure we're not forgetting anything. So we will take comments directly, it's okay to funnel them through us. If you have a comment about us, then you could submit it directly to Fish and Wildlife via the pathway that's on the website, or if you have a comment for another agency, that would also be the best pathway. But we'll accept any comments. We have hitch, dedicated hitch staff in the office, and they love doing this kind of stuff.
If I can continue then, I'll just add a couple bullet points, knowing we're going to add more official comments somewhere down the pipeline, and so don't overweight any of these. But what I like so much about the strategy was the first part of it, where we chronicle the history of the various efforts and the difficulties that come with doing population modeling and some of the financial constraints. But on the, on the goals or proposed actions, I guess, my constructive criticism would be, for a strategy document that is supposed to guide our future actions, the goals and proposed actions seemed a bit thin. You know, we're currently in the middle of a Clear Lake Hitch emergency declaration. Hopefully, the adoption of this strategy would be one step toward the idea that we're identifying a more sustainable framework toward addressing this emergency. But, you know, I saw a lot of research and monitoring, and the need to do more pure science before, probably as a necessary prerequisite to doing the applied science that we need to do to actually help this species. But it seemed like more of the same, in a sense, with many of the proposed actions. I saw an emphasis on the importance of habitat and juvenile recruitment. I think there's a possible understatement of the importance of what's happening in the lake proper with our non-native fish and impacts on adult Clear Lake Hitch populations, because it's nice to get juvenile recruitment, it's nice to get, happy to get the juveniles in there, but I don't know that this is really in any meaningful way discussing what's happening to our adult populations, because that, you need adults, obviously, to even begin the juvenile conversation. I didn't see, and again, I don't want to overweight this, I'm just noting it because I note it. I don't see any meaningful discussion of the potential impacts of commercial fishing contests here in Clear Lake. You know, we know bioatropation is a thing with the carp, we haven't talked a whole lot about it with some of our fishing practices, and also, you know, minor things like weigh-ins, but, you know, is there disruption of migration and feeding patterns of non-native fish? Are we resulting in excessive concentrations with our weigh-in practices? So, and I don't want to like start a furball, not knowing any of the answers to that question, but, you know, it is so ironic to be here on an emergency footing about how we're talking about, not just the survival of the Clear Lake Hitch, but some potential for restoration to thriving populations, without even talking about the big elephant in the room, that's the introduction of non-native species. I think there may be a balance available, and maybe habitat is the proper way to put it, but if there are other downward pressures on hitch populations that are not involving habitat, for example, you put a lot of emphasis on tributary restoration, totally agree with that, but guess what? In the middle of an extended drought, you could have a perfectly restored tributary channel with no water in it. So what's going on, again, in the lake during those extended drought cycles? And I don't know that the strategy identifies that as something to provide a focus on. Another constructive criticism is research and monitoring, even that, this chronicles pretty well that it's hard to fund research reliably year to year, it's hard to get that baseline data, and then it's hard to sustain that research and monitoring funding. So again, the strategy agreement, the disclaimer kind of said it all. We can sign the strategy, but it doesn't commit staffing resources, and it doesn't commit money. So again, is the strategy a living document, as useful as it is, is that going to be justification for us to back off our emergency footing? And I don't know that for a fact. And those were just some bullet points I wanted to raise, none of them are deal breakers. I do acknowledge this is the starting point, not the ending point, and it will be a living document. But from my perspective, if this is going to be a strategy, I'd like to see a little more meat on the goals.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments or questions?
So I do have one concern, coming from a very ignorant, non-scientific perspective, but the surveys you're doing are mostly in the northern section of the lake. And I can't help but always remember that we went from almost zero to, oh my gosh, what happened? We have very difficult times explaining how we got from there to 1.4 million. Obviously, your fish count is kind of like our homeless pick count, like it's never going to be perfect, it's always going to be a little room for error, but I don't see any changes in the surveying going down towards the southern parts of the lake, where we're talking about a completely disconnected area, potentially Scotts Valley, potentially Blue Lakes, but we're not talking about the lower arms of the lake. And I just want to make sure that if we're going to base our actions off of research and not just alienating it to just one portion of the lake, maybe there has been an evolution where there's a need to be in the southern part of the lake. That's where the currents are going, that's where the winds are blowing, that's where there's probably going to be more water left at the end of a drought versus the northern section that gets much more shallow. So it just feels like we have this kind of question mark on, how did we end up going from so little to so many? And yet we're not expanding, it doesn't feel like the expansion of these surveys going to the southern part of the lake, and I would like to see it go there to help us better say, look, there's nothing there, or maybe there's something that has changed. I know that we have seen throughout our history of evolution that things have changed drastically. During the Industrial Revolution, things changed drastically, and you'll probably read about it all the time when you learn about it through science, the butterflies that changed from white butterflies to black butterflies, because all of a sudden, the white ones were easy to pick off, and the other ones that were darkened by the suit were able to hide. And so that took very little amount of years to make that evolutionary change. We're seeing unprecedented type of weather droughts, and to ignore 50% of our lake just seems like we're missing something, and I hope that we can expand it. I know it costs money to do those surveys, but it just seems like a missed opportunity if we don't.
If I may, yeah, totally, I agree with you. And that's what I, we hope that the action on setting up a technical science advisory committee, they can help answer those questions for us, and to let us know if our current surveying efforts are adequate or not. I mean, that's really what that goal is designed to get at, is our current science that we're doing right now adequate to assess these problems? So we're hoping that setting up an outside technical advisory committee of experts can, they can come in and help us refine our efforts, current efforts.
I have a comment to that, to reply also.
On the mic.
That doesn't work, so.
It does, it does.
You guys can hear, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment to your comment Supervisor Spatier, that we as the county are monitoring the lower lakes, or lower section of the lake, lower tributaries. So every week, we've been going out to Siegler, Burns, Copsy, Schindler, I'm forgetting somebody in there, Perrini, and there's probably another one that I'm forgetting, but we have been monitoring those. And our goal is to take that data, package it up, put a little ribbon on it, and give it to California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So U.S. Fish and Wildlife are separate than California Department of Fish and Wildlife, right? So those population estimates that you were talking about are very focused in the upper section of the lake. And working with CDFW, we asked, how can we help? And we're trying to hit the spots that are not monitored.
But thus far, the data hasn't been aggregated together, and I know in the past, it's been all about the surveys that have been done, and they've been in the north area, and I just want to make sure in our strategic plan...
Yep.
...that we're implementing all of those things, or else it just, part of it doesn't make sense to me.
And let's...
I knew other agencies were looking at the southern lakes, something was mentioned to that effect in our previous presentation, but it's still, it's separate datas, and we got to make sure we're aggregating everything together.
Absolutely. At the end of this season, it will be aggregated.
And let's clarify that CDFW, since it was listed in 2014, started their surveys mostly predominantly in the upper arm and the upper tributaries. USGS since 2017 has done all their surveys in lake, throughout the entire lake. So they do surveys even in the Keys, in Lower Arm, Cache Creek, we know there's hitch in Cache Creek, they do surveys throughout the whole lake. Over the last two years, I believe, Fish and Wildlife Service has contracted USGS to conduct those surveys in order to determine the population that's in the lake, in the entire lake, in order to make a listing decision through the Federal Endangered Species Act process. And I believe U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is going to continue that funds for USGS. So there are data collected in the entire lake by USGS for the in-lake studies, and I believe they are coming out in June, the second and third week of June, they will be out doing those surveys on the lake. So you'll see the big boats, they do the big nets, the gill nets, and they do those surveys, and that's throughout the entire lake.
And you had mentioned Middle Creek Restoration Project, absolutely agree that that's a huge aspect of creating the habitat that has been destroyed. But in the South Lake, we have Anderson Marsh State Park, which is probably a magnificent habitat out there with the Thuleys and everything else that's there. So hoping to see the aggregated data and continuing that work.
Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just want to make sure that everybody from the community does get their comments, and I know we have a lot of folks that are working on this, from the tribal nations to our local agricultural folks and everybody, just make sure they have the opportunity to get the comment in, so we'll spread the word and continue that conversation. You know, one thing I like about the strategy as we move forward is just that continued commitment for everyone to work together on these hitch strategies. So as you said, they're in the whole lake, as you just talked about, Anderson Marsh, one of the oldest villages here in Lake County, it wasn't there for...
No reason.
...great views, it was there for a reason. Produced life to make sure that we had what we need to sustain life, so we know that the hitch were everywhere. So we'll continue that process, continue it on, but I know there's been a commitment from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services and everybody to make sure that the tribes, you know, the county are really working together on this and collaborating, and you saw some of that, you know, up on the board, the $2.5 million commitment and some of the other grants that are happening. So we'll continue that work, and yeah, please get your comments in, I appreciate your comments, Michael, and we'll make sure that we get a response. Would like to see us signing this thing when it does come back, to get it completed before the end of the year, so we can have that long-term strategy. Something you've heard me say before, having a plan. We want things to happen sooner, but having a long-term plan is always the vision to really protect what we have as assets here in Lake County, and that lake is one of the biggest ones, and everything in it. So that's all I have.
Yeah, and the health of the hitch is our best indicator of the health of the lake. And so the strategy is really dense, it's 132 pages. So just want to remind everyone, this is just the overview of the strategy, so take some time to get into it and get those comments into us as soon as possible, and I'm really looking forward to finalizing this when you're ready.
And also a response to Supervisor Green, I think when you work in a collaborative way, there's no way to request that others commit. We can commit what we want to commit, but that's part of the collaboration, is it's a relationship and a common ground of what the vision is of what we want to get accomplished. But we can't force others to do certain things, and we hope that they'll be right along beside us as we move forward. So I think that's the best that we can do at this moment in time, and as long as we're focused on getting these things accomplished, I think others will be right there with us too. There's nothing further, let's open it up for public comments. Supervisor Green, did you have a response? All right, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please comment up. Joan, please comment up.
Joan Moss, I am 79 years old. I have a long history. I was a tutor for the United States government at Ehem Indian Colony. And there was, I'll never forget, our hitch gathering. It was one of the rivers that go downhill. We got the whole tribe collecting the hitch, the children, the adults. Very long topic, oh, but I'll never forget it. Whenever I go by, I remember how the people of Ehem all got together for the, for a change and we all chased the hitch by hand, barefoot in the lake. I'll write about it. Thank you so much. I was a tutor for the title for Indian education through the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Is that a hand up in Zoom? I see. Oh, let's go ahead and start with the first one. Rebecca Harper?
Hi, everyone. It's Rebecca Harper, Lake County Farm Bureau Executive Director. I just wanted to give a shout out and say thank you so much to Jared Sellers for all his work on the conservation strategy. It's been a very lengthy process and Jared has done a wonderful job and been very thorough. So, I just wanted to express my gratitude for all of his work on this. Thanks, Jared.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Benjamin Hiddle.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys for all your work on this. This is a super important thing and I know we're supposed to look at the long-term benefits and it's hard to tell somebody how much it would cost to redo a whole population of fish and probably be billions of dollars. So, really good on all this. Thank you, Jared. Thank you, board. Thank you, everybody involved in this. And I hear that the strategies that we've been doing to count the fish have been potentially difficult and I'm wondering if we have any underwater drones and things like that that will more accurately count the fish and be cheaper to do throughout the lake. Thanks.
Thank you for your question. Did you have a response?
It's funny you mention that because USGS is currently working on an underwater drone to, to look into populations of juvenile hitch in the streams. They're going to start a project, a pilot next year. They've already done this project in other rivers in California and they hope that it is equally applicable here in Clear Lake. So, they will be using underwater drones to monitor hitch in the streams next year, starting a pilot project.
Thank you for your comment. It's never been more exciting to work for USGS. Now you got underwater drones. Thank you for that. I don't see any further hands in the Zoom room and no one else seems to be coming up to the mic in the chamber, so I'll bring it back to the board. Any final comments? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just one last question slash comment. It's, it's again, living document, but it, and I can't ask you to speak for a different legislative thing, but the potential ties anyway with the Blue Ribbon Committee process, and I only mention that because it's a process. We have legislation, we have funding getting routed through there from CNRA and that's the closest thing. I think we have the regulatory framework that routinely guarantees we're going to be looking at projects annually and looking at potential sources of funding, whereas I don't see the proposal for such a framework in here. So, again, I get it's voluntary and we're not going to commit anything, but absent such a commitment to routinely come together, not with just a technical advisory committee, but a budget committee that goes with that, you know, how are we going to move these things forward? Again, it still seems a little bit thin to me. So, I'm all for this county or this watershed district or both moving toward being signatories of this document, but I'm just wondering if there could be a greater, some consideration of how to leverage the existing process that's in place through the Blue Ribbon Committee so that we can either get another signature on this document as part of that ongoing commitment to these, or we can consider whether to kind of clone that approach and at least bake in some, some thought of future, how we handle future projects, how we handle future budget requests. Because again, without a clear strategy on how not to just get people at the table and sign this document, how do we get them to sign on to the projects that this strategy hopefully will inspire? And so, I think the Blue Ribbon Committee is a great model to look at. It's, you know, boots on the ground and we already have it, but it's not necessarily the only, the only tool in the toolbox. And so, again, greater consideration of future budgeting and future project analysis, I think, would improve this strategy.
Yeah, I agree with that and those issues that you bring up are really the crux of getting a lot of these things done and getting, you know, funding is important. And it does need to be spelled out more in the conservation strategy, how it is really opport, we're looking for opportunities, right? It's an opportunistic way of going about conservation where, you know, we're in the right place at the right time, we find the right landowner and we have the right grant to line up to do that restoration. And that is harder, it's, you know, hard to do a framework around that and it's hard, but that does need to be memorialized in the conservation strategy that, you know, acknowledge the difficulties of getting the stuff done and securing funding and getting personnel to do that while also, you know, it's, hopefully by pooling all our resources, we can create more of those opportunities to create conservation and get funding for these projects. But having a specific, you know, plan called out is definitely not a bad idea. And yeah, we'll definitely look into trying to get that sort of thing incorporated. Another thing is, you know, this conservation strategy is meant to memorialize, again, that close working relationship and by me coming up here to talk to your guys' personnel and staff that you have working on it and working with the Blue Ribbon Committee, I hope that we can, you know, integrate our, our efforts.
Vice Chair.
Thank you for this presentation. Thank you for all the hard work and I already really appreciate the collaboration with the different governments and the different agencies and whatnot. I think the Blue Ribbon Committee, it's its own separate thing and does similar work as well, might be something good to model, but I think all in all, right now, you have what you need and keep moving forward. They'll pretty much see this in one way, shape or form, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I think just a reminder, the comment made by Supervisor Pyska about the 2.5 million and the 250, or 2.1 million and $250,000 since the emergency, there's momentum. There's momentum and more collaboration, more gathering and meetings and trying to figure out what to do, what's the solutions, what do we need, what data do we need? And so, I think right now, we just need to continue doing that. This is a strategic plan and just like any other strategic plan, it's up to the folks that want to, that have the power to implement it, to implement it. And I think that's where it comes back to the Board of Supervisors for the actions of the county. So, I'm happy with the momentum that we have currently. If there's no further comments, thank you again very much for coming and presenting and letting us see a little bit of the strategic plan of the conservation plan and we'll see you on June 18th. And if there's a way to make sure, if that has already been done, to try to advertise the public comment, whether that's through social media, whether that's through a press release, some way, shape or form to ensure.
We did have a press release and I believe it's shared on the social media, but we can, I can touch base with Matthew and make sure that goes out there again.
And I have a question. How did we settle on June 18th? Is this a date that you provided?
No. It came from, and I'm, just to review, that date is, we just want to review our comments or potential additions to the conservation strategy plan from the county or watershed protection district side. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I know the suggestion was made by a member, but I want to make sure that we're working on your timetable. That is also our budget hearing week.
Yeah.
So...
It's up to you guys.
I mean, I want to know what works with you and, you know, are you going to wait until the comment period has closed? You want to collect the comments first? How do you want to work?
I'll also say that's the week that USGS is going to be sampling out in the lake and we do, they're doing a field trip. So, if any members of the board would like to see sampling in person or any members of admin to, know that that's an option and you can talk to us about that, but we will have staff that are out there. So, that week might be a little hard, but we can, around that timeframe, we should probably July 2, yeah, we can figure out, somewhere in there.
I just don't want to feel like, you to feel like you're under pressure for that date.
Yeah, well, the comment period will have just ended, correct? So, yeah, that is kind of close.
If it helps, I think...
Yeah, it'll, almost have ended.
We're going to do a formal comment.
Right.
I feel like we bounced it around pretty good here. You know, there's no real need to come back on the 18th to double down on that. I'm okay with giving everyone a pass on that.
Bring it back when you have the ability to bring it back and you're prepared to bring it back.
Love it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.